Is going to be, um... I feel like I'm on a game show.
Let me help you.
Please.
Basically, a couple of items that came up. One, you either gotta cut costs. Major costs for your salaries. And you know, when you start doing that, that's cutting people. That's either cutting hours or cutting back positions. If that's happened, I don't think seniority should apply. It should be a matter of the productive employee. Item two is, well, item one should be with Chief Dennis. He can take care of this. But that's a pretty big hill to climb when you're in the hole. Item three is the PD look at any kind of structure, any kind of way to cut costs as far as scheduling, anything that keeps overtime down to a minimum. I think we have open hire right now. We're accepting that question for a full-time position. So we're trying to ballot that direction. But you know, we might have had to have a few officers on nights opposed to dates. Vice versa, we keep that in control. I don't know. I'm not here to dictate how the PD runs. It's just something's gotta change as far as the trajectory. Chief Dennis said he can take care of that. You know, we don't have a lot of time to take care of it. It's 10,000, 11,000 over per month, but it's gotta be taken care of.
Well, what's John Mulott's type on this? And then he, you know, maybe addressing some of those. I mean, I realize he's not here tonight, so it's probably not fair to ask, but...
Yeah, we'd probably best bring him be here.
Yeah.
He's got to, he's gotta get on top of this and get this done.
I think being shorthanded got us here in the first place, so layoffs isn't an option. So, I mean, right, yeah, I understand. I mean, I think give it to Chief Dennis and let him take care of it. Give him an opportunity to...
All figures to them, they can predict in the next 48 hours what will happen, how many hours he's gonna need. It's kinda hard to gauge. I mean, wouldn't be in the same situation next month because we had to make our own spend and they used up a lot of money.
What do we do about that, Kent? I mean, we just can't keep doing that.
I know. I mean, tell officers, "Well, we gotta make our own spend. If you stay home, I mean, we can't do that either." I mean, I don't know. I have, we haven't discussed this, guys. Probably a good time to bring this up. It's a possibility of a public safety tax to help fund this shortfall.
But you gotta stay within budget. You gotta...
But I'm talking about, because this is gonna be an ever-ending process. Our budget is gonna be like this. We'll keep having to dress this and be in the same wars all the time. If we not, it's just probably a good time to make a change and talk to go into public safety tax, help public safety project.
Right now, we need to, we can go back to this up here just a few minutes. But we need to address the budget.
Yeah.
Concern first.
I mean...
Once we're over budget, we got to have that approved. Do you want the expenditure to stay? I'm pretty firm of staying within budget. Whatever needs to be done, to stay within budget. That's what I promised. That's what we all promised. Make sure we do.
I agree with what you're saying, Mayor, but I want to point out one other... bear trap. If you look at this first month, we're way over budget. We have 11 line items on there with zero expenditure in the first month. So now, when those kick in, and they were all... busy board, different items that have zero on there. If those had gone one-twelfth from the annual budget in that month, we'd be looking at huge numbers.
You're right.
It's setting out there, and it was budgeted for a reason. So happened the first month, we had no expenditure in those items. But it will come.
Some of that's gonna be a wash because of those things that we talked about, like the phone bill coming down and the training. There's gonna be some wash there, but it still, it still could come around.
Can we give them the opportunity and readdress this again in 30 days? Give them time to work on this and see if it's better next month? Because he obviously has a plan in mind to take care of it.
It's gonna have to be September. August is already over.
In September, give him to, let him work on it. Let him actively work on it and address it again in September.
We still have to approve...
Can we do that? I mean, we do that.
Well, that's, well, you know, we, he said he needed a couple of months, and we said, "We don't have a whole lot of time," but...
What we're gonna have to do is approve a deficit in the budget, which is something we want to stay away from this move.
I agree with that. I agree with that, Colby, that somewhere, though, we might, you know...
And I, okay, with your suggestion, and I'm not doubting Chief Dennis. Don't get that wrong. But if for some reason we can't overcome this, what are you prepared to do to eliminate $20,000, $30,000 deficit?
We'll have to look at personnel and layoffs. And there's no other option, if I can say, is there?
But that's what got us here in the first place.
I understand that. But we're talking, we're talking about dollars.
Yeah.
The train's gonna be going in another direction when you do that, because then your officer's already working quite a bit. One officer last week, he has to take a charge vacation in over a year.
Maybe layoffs.
I don't know what the answer is.
Layoffs isn't the answer, but hiring is the answer. I mean...
Yeah, but actually, this is...
$6,000 in overtime.
Is the overtime, Chief, is that strictly from people filling in for other folks? Or is that, or is that other overtime, like report making and various activities?
Stuff like that. You know, you go back, it may be underfunded again. I mean, you know, our salaries aren't going just that much from month to month, so it's gonna be a history of pattern of, you know, a year back or whatever. I mean, the pattern's there, how much our budget or what we're spending every month. So was that a big increase or from over last month or the, you know, year from last year or what?
Well, your overtime budget was cut, too.
Yeah. And, you know, so we're not doing anything any different from month to month. As far as a pattern in the history, you can look back and say, "Was there a great expenditure last month?" I think you're gonna say it's probably pretty well done and close to the same.
Chief, this is pretty bare bone budget. And all these items, as they've been the expenditure in, or some of the ones that have been, if there's some way you can reduce those or eliminate those...
My concern is, well, take care of it.
I would be in favor of taking those monies that you say they're reallocated in their salaries.
Within their budget.
Within the budget, yeah. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, move it around. If there's things here that he can do without, he can eliminate and use those monies to offset some of his budget salaries.
You're talking about last line of, the final total number?
The total number.
That's what, yeah, that's all I'm looking, I'm not going through their budget. That's, that's why we got Chief out here to take care of the budget, and though it's just...
I pointed out 11 items that there's been no expense. And some of those that he can do with less or eliminate, and that could free up some monies to be put into salaries.
We're gonna try and make it on a computer expense. And, you know, several different things. We're trying to not do anything this year. You know, I tell everybody, this year, it'll be our tough this year. But, you know, we're gonna get back on the bare bone budget anyway. So what we got's what we got.
That might help. We can shuffle it all around.
Well, from the discussion, it looks like we're gonna give it some time. Come back in one month, second meeting of September. See how it progresses? Is that, is that, is that what we're heading toward right now?
As you pointed out, August, basically, a ton of people are handling through it. Anything implemented is not gonna affect month to August. We won't see the savings if there is any in September. I'd be in favor of approving where we are, and then the chief of chance.
Okay, so is that a motion that you approved, the $11,160 over?
Mr. Baker, motion second.
We have a motion and a second for being over budget. $11,160 approved those expenditures. That was not in the budget. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We do all have a $216 amount that's in the control department. That's over budget. I would ask for a motion for that. To perfection. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that is passed. We do need to amend the budget. Apparently, in the budget-making time, we have a discrepancy in our Mirmah bill that works up to be $11,000 and some change. $11,500? $11,500. That we've got to include into the budget. Meaning that we did not include the entire amount of the bill into the budget. There are four, three or four departments that do not have insurance line items. And I'll speak for you, maybe, is the finance committee, we've self-discussed about taking their labor, their salaries, and proportion, making that insurance bill proportional between those three departments. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Well, which ones don't have?
Public Safety Administration, Code Enforcement, and 911.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. And it'll be divided based off salary.
Are you paying your last year's bill?
Current bill we're working with, the current amount to work and have to use for our budget. We, we put in there $255,000. We need $261,000 up.
That's last year's bill?
$263.
We already paid that, right?
Thank you.
We paid last year's bill. We did.
We've paid it, so we're working it out for this year. It's for this year. And so this will accumulate money for next year's bill, which if it's the same, we've got the money.
We have to be prepared.
We gotta be prepared for it.
I understand that, but I'm saying, hopefully, we're gonna get our Mirmah costs down if we'll at least get that reported to...
We got to prepare for the worst. Hopefully, that's the case, but we all got to prepare for that. If we get our claims down, injuries, liability claims down, it will possibly go down.
And the items that they told us to fix that we got being on, $300?
But we still got a discrepancy in the budget that we're not being, not being prepared for.
And probably it wouldn't hurt next month, let's have a report on what all needs to be done on Mirmah. Has it been done?
Okay, very good point. Motion is on the floor. It's been seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. That will conclude my report. Let's, we'll go into committee reports. Mr. Ross, do you have anything else to add?
Um, not at this time, I don't believe.
Okay. Anybody else? Police committee, street committee?
Public Safety.
Okay, sorry. You used to do that.
We have two things, which I just gave you. You're gonna have a report, right? We missed, we missed the, well, it's the department reports next. Johnny just got ahead, I guess. But, Public Safety, we are recommending that we seek bids on a firm to prepare the storm wire management plan. We're already out of compliance with that, and we have until November the 15th to get the plan done. Victor has stated it's a very complicated plan if they want. And we, we were told about it a long time ago. I actually do remember that. And we didn't really do anything about it. We didn't address it. And when they came, they, really cause they found us to be in non-compliance, right? I mean, I don't know where we're gonna come up with the money for it, but it's, it seems like it has to be done.
Was there a deadline on the plan?
Yes, November the 15th.
So your motion is to set bids or go out for bids? I mean, seek bids.
Seek bids on a firm to prepare the storm wire and the five, the five-year plan that we, we need to have.
Is there a second for this?
There.
Do you have any discussion regarding the subject?
We got it in December. And I see that you could probably address this.
What's the question?
Penalties. He was asking about the other penalties and...
I don't remember, was your penalty spelled out in this?
I don't know. I don't believe there was. Basically, it was not compliance.
They gave us a grace period to come into compliance. Like we're at that stage yet, because of the grace period to comply.
But if we don't get it in...
It is serious. I understand it's the law and there are enforcement provisions at law.
It will lead, it could lead to bad things. It could lead to penalties. It could lead to not, not receiving grants. It could lead to lots of things.
Lock the mayor up? Oh, we're talking about...
We gotta do what we gotta do.
Yeah, I think one more team. I hope I can write that off my taxes. Yeah, there you go. CJ.
Any discussion? I would support at least how they got what this would cost.
It would, it would hurt.
Well, I mean, it's, it's... The biggest thing is that we do not have anyone in our employ within the city at present at the moment. You know, with the engineering expertise that's gonna be required to write up this plan. I mean, it's, it's gotta go to some engineering firm that would be able to, you know, draw off the plan and make the amount of water flow and storm water in different directions, you know, to get it out of our city. And so, I, I agree. You know, we can take the bid, but we'll have to determine how we pay for it after that, I suppose. But at this point in time, we don't have the expertise to do it.
Do we have any of the work done, Dick? Are we doing anything toward that?
Kind of been keeping our nose above the water, barely, I think, on it. You may or may not have the letter of the recommendation from the city engineer that we hire someone to complete this. Councilman Socklaw may have that letter, but Vince did give a letter saying we thought that would be the best route.
He told, but he wasn't qualified.
Well, it's a shame, city this size, we're talking about trying to pay police department. We gotta turn around. But that's the law. And by what our federal government tells us to do.
So all came to the city in 2004.
Let's go say aye. Brandon has asked for this for years, so...
We've been involved with this for...
Any more questions regarding the motion?
Mayor, do we, as a city, have to pay this or do we get any help from CLGW?
Stormwater is not served.
Stormwater, yeah. It's talking about the shoreline. They can't get rid of their water.
Different system, different system. At least it's supposed to be separate system. All right, motion on the floor. Any questions? All in favor to approve, motion, I'm Mr. Socklaw, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, one other thing. I mean, I really didn't say this, but I thought of the discussion about money, but as Chief Dennis mentioned, one of the police officers is no longer in pay status. So we're proposing to move one of the part-time people into that full-time position for now. He's already working part-time, so that would just increase, really wouldn't increase anything because we already had his salary in here. So, um, the, the police officer is on FMILI, you know, but he's not receiving any pay from the city. So that, I believe Chief Dennis talked to him, and he's agreed that if, both officers have agreed, if he can come back, the one that's off, then the one that would go to full-time would just step back and go back to part-time. But he's willing to do the full-time job now.
The reason for that is, we're just 29 hours a week working part-time status.
I see nothing wrong with that.
They've just changed positions.
Well, no, the other guy's just not in pay status at all. But if he came back, if he came back, if he came back, no, he can work anymore.
Still, that's gonna be in overtime, so I say these too, right?
Yes, right.
The current benefits for the person that can't work is they're, they're no longer getting paid, right?
Right, but it was in the budget before, so it wouldn't add anything to the...
Any chance for him in Mirmah, they'll kick him to three to six months, so, before he asks for that, is that right?
Oh, you're talking about health insurance program and retirement?
Yes.
Is there a grace period or some sort of period of that date?
I think so.
Does it start? Regardless, we're not paying the ones, it just fills the next slot. As long as we're not double paying.
No, it's only...
What, you think we're paying something this way?
You're saving a part-time salary by making the switch.
I mean, like his healthcare and his dental and retirement.
It's win-win.
We're sacrificing benefits because he's due to come back after the sick leave he was...
Obviously, obviously, I mean, I'll do what I want to do.
Thank you. I thought we were starting to...
Because it's not paid for that. He's not, it's not paid. The FMILI was, it's not paid. What, what we're talking about here is...
Did she make a motion?
She did, she did make a motion. Did you, you made a motion or?
I don't think I did, actually, make a motion.
But she will.
But I will, I will make a motion that we hire Stephen Gregory in the full-time position as a police officer. I would, we might even call it temporary full-time.
That sounds complicated. Two seconds. Okay, discussion. What we're really talking about behind this here is, they're gonna check into, see if benefits need to be paid for both people or just for the one that's, that moved up into full-time position. Uh, the, the position was opened by, and the, the sick leave was over, or someone was paid. So we're gonna check into that. But motion on the floor. Any other discussions regarding that particular motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Socklaw, anything else?
Mr. Mueller, were you going to talk about what we talked about in the last meeting, about the title search money to get the demolitions of property? It's been so long ago, maybe, you remember?
Yes, I remember.
Mr. Mueller was gonna make a motion, but...
Well, I remember we have an issue or two we have to deal with on that. I didn't know who was gonna bring it up, because we've run into a couple of problems.
As far as what, what's problems?
That money from the sale of the property.
Yes, sir. Please come up.
Mayor, this is problematic. But what we discovered when we received title search effect to demolish some of the properties, uh, the house that was donated to the city and then sold.
Yes, sir.
Money was put into an account. The title search money and demolition for X number of houses was supposed to be taken out of that money.
Yes, sir.
That was put into, Chris will correct me or help me as I go along here if I get it wrong. It was put into fire reserve money. It's where they housed that $25,000, $26,000.
Okay.
All right, the monies that we had in that reserve that we had budgeted things for, we used that budgeted money out of our regular line item budget. And that reserve money at the end of the year for that $25,000 didn't get put back in that account last year. So that money was spent and not reimbursed as it should have been at the end of the year into that account. We not knowing that went ahead as we were directed into a title searches, getting ready for the demolition of whatever we could get done with that $25,000. Well, we got $800 bill from Title Search Company came in, and there's no money in that account to pay for that, much less for the demolition of those first scheduled building. Are you following me?
I follow you, I'm set. Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm set.
I think it was probably overlooked because we had money lying out on certain things that we used that money for, but that $25,000 ended up as part of that 60 we had.
Okay.
It wasn't put back in that account.
Let's do this with this discovery. Let's, um, let's table this next meeting. And let's look at our accounts and see where they all may stand and what it's made to be. Do we have an outstanding bill that needs to be paid?
Yes, we do.
Let's get it paid for by general revenue. Is that okay with the council?
Yes.
It's a bill we need to pay, you know?
And I would, I would suggest for right now that, and I hate to even say this, but put that project on hold if we don't do any more than it's already in process until the council addresses how we're gonna pay for the rest of it.
Yeah, we've got some money set aside, but I don't know if it's built yet. So I wanna get some time, look into our accounts, see how the money's coming in, and then we'll meet and discuss this.
Now, this is not the money out of this year of a setback for demolition possibly. This is that last year money for the sale of that house.
Now, we approved that by a motion to, to useless funds. Are we, are we supposed to take some amends to that? The house that we sold?
Uh-huh. We, that was money to earmark to them demolish other, other houses?
Other properties. Then that, took that money and put it back in there to do that. You know, it's a couple wings to come back to this.
How about the overage we got a few left?
That's what we're, I wanna look into. I wanna make sure our, our accounts and our balances are good before we make any kind of decisions in this evening. Because we're not gonna hurt anything.
Well, I, and I think the, the discussion point that Mr. Socklaw was talking about is that I had said that if, that we've got no much set aside for a budget for a citywide cleanup.
Overall, generally, I believe it's $125,000.
So, I mean, I, oh, to me, if we can, if we can demolish eight or 10 houses and clean them up that way, that's as much of the, the, now, that's part of the citywide cleanup right there. So, I mean, if, if, rather than direct all the money into a dumpster, we can redirect it and use it for this demolition.
Yeah, the, the, the matter that really certainly is that we, we've got to replace this $25,000.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's been, council has, so, let's get that addressed, and then we'll come back to the subject.
But I mean, all I'm saying is if we can't, if we gotta, if, best way we can do is demolish, demolish only 80 or so replacement that need to be done, and then I'd say forego another citywide cleanup. We, we got the dumpster and everything out there for them to use if...
And that $25,000 there, that's a rounding number.
Yes, sir. We'll get the exact amount, that was in the meeting. We'll take care of that, but we'll get that addressed the next meeting, please.
While I'm up here.
But yes, sir. Might as well.
Two things, as you know, and have some of the other council persons know. We did receive a grant to buy a new ladder truck. Received a grant to the federal government, something Chief Mulott has worked on for several years. We got turned down. We go to seminars, go to grant writing sessions, pick up a few corners, talk to people. It's been successful in the grants, and this year we were awarded that grant for $750,000. It is 95.5 money. Federal government pays 95% of the bill for the new ladder truck. City pays the 5%. We did budget our portion, the city portion of this year's budget. Uh, it'll end up being, I believe, around $37,000. And we budgeted enough for capital approvals, just take care of that. I would ask with, with approval that the city accepts the grant. Uh, I would say it's kinda like winning the lottery, but it wasn't as simple as going and buying a lottery ticket. Chief Mulott, Director Mulott, like you should say in that, I guess, spent several, well, several hours, wouldn't really get it, a multitude of hours working on this. And like I say, tweaking it over. It, it's probably a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city to get something like this, to replace a 1979 truck that's on loan from the conservation department that we got. So I would respectfully ask the city to approve it.
Oh, move, if we made a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. How would the council feel about pulling that money from the capital approvals tax? And maybe we can work with the numbers to replenish the money that's spent.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that? Within that motion? Is that okay with your motion?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other thing. One other thing, we...
Good work, good work on that.
Well, thank you, though. It, it, it goes to Chief Malott, Director Malott.
The ninety thousand dollars that's...
Twenty, twenty-five years, yes. We did have one of our full-time people resign this week. He's, uh, technically already gone. He's finishing out three shifts at vacation time. And I would ask that we have permission to hold for a full-time firefighter apparatus operator. I'd like for it, but all possible, to go in the paper as soon as can. It'll be running about five days. We really need to get on this. I'd be a good qualified person to hopefully stay within this budget that we're all struggling with.
You don't have anybody in the house to take what we're doing to them?
Since I've been here, Larry, we, we've always...